Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for February the 6th, beginning at 7:07 PM. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out and being here with us this evening. We will start our meeting with our open ceremony. Please join Ms. Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. At this time, it is time for our program and our presentation. Our first program will be announced by Ms. Anita Foster.
Hello, and welcome again, everybody. You're very lucky to be here tonight, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, because tonight, we have an amazing presentation from the All-Region Junior High Middle School Symphony Orchestra. This is a really great story. It's not easy to become a member of this group. They had to work really hard to get there. So these students that are here in front of you tonight, they earned seats in the top path of the TMEA Region 5 Junior High Middle School Symphony Orchestra. They earned these seats through competitive auditions of students across Arlington, Mansfield, and Fort Worth. The process started with almost 400 students, narrowed down to the 35 that you see here tonight. These students just participated in the region concert with one of the leading orchestra educators in the country, and that was Dr. James Mick from Ithaca College in upstate New York. In less than two days, the students in the region orchestra joined together to present an amazing concert. And tonight, they're going to perform one of those selections, Rogue Rider, by Doug Spada, conducted by Kathy Patterson. Hello, Kathy Patterson. Give us a wave. How are you? Head Orchestra Director at Shackelford Junior High School. So take it away, orchestra.
Ms. Patterson, All-Region Orchestra, that was amazing. Thank you so much for sharing that talent with us. Well done. Okay. Next on our agenda is our Student of the Month, who is from Sam Houston High School. And to make this announcement, I would like to invite the principal for Sam Houston High School, Mr. Will Rial.
(applause) Thank you. President Mays, school members, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity. I am honored to introduce our Student of the Month from Sam Houston High School, Abdul Malik Badibo. We call him Malik. He is obvious, he is our obvious choice here at Sam Houston High School for Student of the Month. Malik is involved in track, trio, and key club. He is also very active at his church in Grand Prairie, the House of Covenant, where he is a youth leader. He leads volunteers in the local community to deliver food and clothing to the homeless. Malik is very passionate about giving back to the community and to those who are less unfortunate. He maintains a 12.4 GPA while also working a full-time job. There are several things that make Malik a standout, such as his positive attitude, his willingness to always put others first, his unending drive to succeed, and most importantly, his belief that there are always better things to come. Malik has big plans for the future. He spends all of his free time in the College and Career Center relentlessly looking for scholarships and opportunities. His number-one Joseph School is McMurray University in Abilene, Texas, where he plans to pursue a degree in chemical engineering. He plans to minor in geology, as he loves, he has a love for the environment. After graduation, he hopes to land a job in a petroleum company. Teachers, counselors, and students all describe Malik as a positive, caring, and passionate person. While he and his family lived in Nigeria, they had a tradition of visiting orphanages on their birthday. They would take clothes and toys to donate to the children. He never takes things for granted. He loves living in the United States and is grateful for all the advantages he has afforded by a good education, strong teachers, and positive leaders at Sam Houston High School. Sam Houston High School is proud to name Abdul Malik Gadibo as Student of the Month.[737.31][737.31](applause)
Thank you. Good day, everyone. As you know, I go by the name Abdul Malik Gadibo, but you can call me Abdul Malik if you'd love to. I really, I want to say a very big thank you to God first, and to everyone who has made it possible for me to get to this point of my life. You know, I dedicate all of this to my parents, my brother, my brothers, and my teachers and colleagues too, who've always added an impact to my life in one way or the other. My experience throughout Sam Houston High School has been a wonderful experience so far. You know, starting from the first day I enrolled in Sam, I always saw myself as this person who's always willing to help others, who's always willing to establish positive relationships that would benefit I and not only me, but the people around me. And that's why I aspire to graduate as part of the top 2% of my class, and to also be the mid-best, the mid-season best athlete in the district. And further on, when I go into college to major in chemical engineering and minor in geology, I would like to keep the flag flying for Sam Houston High School. I would like to keep building that good reputation the school has. And so, one day, when I come back, I would also be an impact to the school and to everyone who has made an impact in my life so far. Thank you very much.[835.13][835.13](applause)
Malik, would you like to introduce your brothers?
Yes, I would like to introduce my brothers. I would like to start by introducing my elder brother, who goes by the name Ajibade Adams. And I would like to also introduce my younger brother, who goes by the name Hamzah Gadibo. He's also a student at Sam Houston. He's a sophomore at the moment, and he loves playing basketball, like I love doing track. So one day, I always tell him that, you know, he can do better things and do greater things than I have done in Sam, and that's what he's passionate about. And I also wanted to talk about my elder brother. You know, he has always been there for us. You know, he's always, he's always pushing us during hard times. He's always telling us to never give up, to always work hard, and stay positive, and always make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Malik, Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down, and we're going to present you with your plaque and take a picture with you, if that's okay. So Malik, this is a pin that the Board of Trustees wear, and we give to individuals who we are very proud and feel like do a great job of representing the district. And obviously, you are doing a great job. And you were talking about having an impact, but I promise, your servant heart is having more impact on others than you feel like they're having on you. So please take this pin, wear it, and congratulations, and keep up the good work.
So Malik, congratulations again, on behalf of our district. You're an example for students, whether you know it or not. They look to you for an example. You're a role model, and I wish you the best of success. I know you will have. Thank you for contributing so much to Sam Houston and our school district. This is for you, and congratulations.[1021.01][1021.01](applause)
I'm sorry, but I would also like to talk about my mentor here. You know, he's always at the College and Career Center with me whenever I go there and search for scholarships. He has helped me. He goes by the name Timmy Jabakin. He graduated from TCU. And I would also like to thank him for all the hard work he has done. Like yesterday, he just gave me a student-athlete scholarship to apply to, and I really thank him for it. You know, not only that, he has done some other things for me that I haven't forgotten. I just want to say a very big thank you, and I would always love to keep working with you. Yeah. Thank you.
(inaudible)
within this district. These are examples that we like to have come back, so that as you saw yourself, you're being that, so you can come back and let the younger generation see you and see what they can do as well. Okay. Next on our agenda, more good stuff, is the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Mr. Aaron Peralis, please.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Being able to be here, and there's just a great sense of joy to hear our student musicians and to hear great successes from students such as Malik. Congratulations on all of your success at your school. Congratulations to your principal, too. And it just continues to be such a joy and an honor to work directly with a community that's so passionate and dedicated to supporting our students, such as the musicians, and students such as Malik and his mentor. Thank you for mentoring him. To be so committed to our students of our school district and staff and campuses, and today, I'd like to celebrate one such organization that continues to show that commitment to our students. Established in 1996, Helping Our Pupils Excel, also known as Hope Tutoring Incorporated, has provided academic support opportunities for hundreds of our economically disadvantaged students in Arlington ISD. Originally launched from Aldersgate United Methodist Church and becoming a nonprofit agency, Hope Tutoring is supported by several local churches, businesses, and the City of Arlington Community Development Block grant. Hope Tutoring provides one-on-one tutoring to students in grades 3 through 8 residing in central and east Arlington. Currently, Hope operates four tutoring centers at local churches. They are Good Shepherd United Methodist Church, Greater Community Baptist Church, First Presbyterian Church, and Epworth United Methodist Church, and has even partnered over the past school year with McNutt Elementary School to provide onsite tutoring. In addition to their school-year tutoring programs, Hope provides academic enrichment activities through several summer camp experiences. One example is provided through a partnership with UTA to offer a Science and Math Partners Camp for students entering the 7th through 9th grades. Other activities during the summer include camps such as reading, computer, and music camps. With their continued focus to support local students excel in their endeavors, Hope Tutoring Incorporated is very deserving of the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. At this time, I'd like to introduce their Executive Director, Ms. Jean Soon.[1298.01][1298.01](applause)
All right. Well, thank you so much, Aaron, and thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and the School Board Trustees, for having us here today. We're just very honored and excited to have this award, and I just wanted to share that 95% of the students that we tutor have seen improvements on at least one academic subject on their report cards. And so, we know that without the partnership and support of AISD, we won't be able to further that. And so, our mission is to reach even more students in 2020 and beyond. So we thank you so much for this honor. And I'll go ahead and bring some of our Board of Directors.
Please.
And then our Community Engagement Director.[1341.83][1341.83](pause)
Please allow each of them to introduce themselves.
I'm Gloria Handy. Name's Ben, and I serve currently as Vice President.
Alina Peña.
I'm Katie Heron, and I'm the Community Engagement Director.
Very, very nice. Ms. Soon, Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down, and we're going to take pictures
Mr. Peralis, do you mind taking a picture with us? She just set it down. Come around this way, we want to have a picture. Yes. Yeah. And I'll be in the picture. Thank you all so much for what you do. Thank you so much for your dedication. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. So, behalf of the AISD School Board, this is your appreciation award for what you do for our district, for our students, and we really, really appreciate it.[1440.01][1440.01](applause)
All right. I got it. Ready? All right. Here. One, two. Crock and bluey. One, two.[1449.01][1449.01](laughter)
Okay. Next on our agenda, more exciting stuff, is our appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Chief Financial Officer.
Move to approve.
Mr. Hogg?
Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Reich, a second by Mr. Hogg. Any questions? If not, please vote. Okay. All present, all on the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to first share that we are appointing a CFO tonight. We still have a CFO, so Cindy Powell will be here through September, and so, just want to make sure that we say that, and also a unique opportunity to have a transition and a very important function in our district. So with that said, it's my pleasure to present our new Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Darla Moss.[1529.24][1529.24](applause) Darla attended Texas A&amp;M University Texarkana for Bachelor of Business Administration and Accounting, Texas A&amp;M University Texarkana for Master of Science in Accounting. Most recently, the Chief Financial Officer in Midland ISD, has been a Chief Financial Officer and a Controller and an Accountant in Liberty Ilu ISD. Ilu? Thank you. Also worked in international paper as a General Ledger Specialist and Accounts Payable Clerk, and has also worked at Sam's Club in Texarkana as an accounting office supervisor and other functions. Darla, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, I'm grateful for this opportunity to come and work for the students, the staff, and the community, and the citizens of this great school district. I'm in my 16th year of service in public education. I started my journey in my hometown of Texarkana. I was born on the Arkansas side and moved to the Texas side. That's when I got into school business. I've worked in Midland for the last two and a half years as their CFO, and I just want to thank you to the many people who have touched my life, mentored me, believed in me, and gave me opportunities that led me here to Arlington, to the great team you have built here at Arlington ISD. I'm very appreciative for the heartfelt welcome I received during my visits. There's no doubt in my mind that you already have superstars here. I'm excited to join that team. Credit to Dr. Cavassos, Ms. Cindy Powell, and Mr. Tony Dollinger for their efficient operations to allow for this transition period. I'm very appreciative of that. I count it as a blessing to be able to work alongside Ms. Powell, and I'm aware that I have big shoes to fill. One of your employees has told me that I have gigantic shoes to fill. Finally, to my supportive husband Keith, who is unable to be here due to weather-related travel delays. We got eight inches of snow in Midland. I just got out in time, so thank you to my children. I have Dana Morales and Sheldon Moss, who joined me here tonight. They, along with my other daughter, Katisha, my two son-in-laws, and two grandsons, all reside in the Metroplex, and they are very excited to have us closer here. So I look forward to joining the team and assisting you with the work here. Thank you so much.[1689.38][1689.38](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Moss. If you don't mind following Mr. Cal out to the foyer up front, we're going to come out so that we can all shake your hand and greet you. Malik, if you would also like to join them out there, so we can all come out and speak to you, we'd appreciate that. And if everyone here will please allow the board to go first, so that we can come back and get to business, and we will be back in 10 minutes. Thank you, Ms. Moss. If you don't mind following Mr. Cal out to the foyer up front, we're going to come out so that we can all shake your hand and greet you. Malik, if you would also like to join them out there, so we can all come out and speak to you, we'd appreciate that. And if everyone here will please allow the Board to go first, so that we can come back and get to business, and we will be back in 10 minutes. All right, 10 minutes it was.
Good to see you, boys.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public hearings, of which there is none this evening, so we will move on to open forum for agenda items. I do not see any cards. I will confer with Ms. Benjamin.
No cards.
No cards, okay. Then we will move on into our agenda for our action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and we'd like to present for your consideration some bond sales, and I'm going to ask Cindy Powell to introduce the topic, but also introduce our guest.
Thank you. President Mays, Board Members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. In November, as you well know, this community approved bonds totaling $966 million for various projects, and so, tonight, we are coming to the Board and asking you to consider approving the first sale of bonds authorized in that election. The proceeds that will be generating from the sale total $311 million, and these bonds will fund the Phase One projects that are planned for our bond sale. That includes three elementary schools, improvements to Gunn Junior High to create the Fine Arts Dual Language Academy program there, improvements at Martin High School, and creation of a third competition athletic field there, technology purchases, bus and service vehicle purchases, and, and fine arts instruments and equipment. So, we briefed the Board during the dinner meeting on the pricing for this particular sale. It's very good. We have with us this evening two key consultants assisting us with the sale. From Hilltop Securities, we have our financial advisor, George Willford, who is a managing director with the firm, and then also, we have from McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton, our bond counsel, Dan Culver, and so, we'll be happy to entertain any questions you all have regarding the sale.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, thank you, and your staff and all bond counsel for all the work on this. 311 is the most we've ever issued.
It is.
Is that correct? Would you say this is the lowest interest rate we've ever issued at?
It is, I believe. I think Mr. Willford can give a better overview of that, but yes, we were very fortunate in that market rates were literally at an all-time low, and so, the, the effective interest rate, the true interest cost for this bond sale is 2.71%.
And with 2.71, which I don't, in all my years, I don't think we've ever issued anything that low, and looking at the chart, there's no way. What did we estimate when we were doing bond calculations when we were going through the entire bond election? Was it three?
Four, 4.75.
4.75?
In our models, yes.
No finance expert, but 200 basis points is usually a pretty good stat for us as a whole to be able to issue and pay off with even less interest. And then, Ms. Powell, also, we're issuing a refund.
Yes.
To the value of approximately 1.5 million also.
Yes, and thank you for that. Yes, we have some bonds from our Series 2011 bonds that we are able to refund, and those will generate savings for us over the remaining life of those bonds. Those bonds, I believe, had maturity out through 2028, and so, that will, it's not a huge reduction, but it's like, much like refinancing your home, and so, we're refinancing those at a lower interest rate, and that'll help us, again, keep our tax rate low.
It's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Just, if you'll just keep the market like this, economy good, rates low, we're, we're all going to be in great shape, but on a serious note, thank you, as we introduce a new CFO, and as you announced your retirement coming up in September, we appreciate all the work that you do on this. And I think just a note for anyone that knows, and Ms. Powell knows this, and I didn't know this before, they had students watching the sale, it's probably like watching paint dry, unless you're really into that, but watching the sale for those future students to understand how municipal bonds works, what a, as you said earlier, what a great training session for those young men and women who might one day find themselves, I don't think anyone chooses municipal bonds, but you get into that somehow in one way or the other, like a lot of our careers we have over there, so, we, that was supposed to be nice. Nevermind, sorry.
And that was...
I'm going to stop and go ahead and make a motion now on, on that, but I truly appreciate the entire team, from our bond counsel to our financial advisors that are helping on this and our, our staff. So, with that, I'll, I'll move for approval of Action A, Series 22, School Building and Refunding Bonds, so, in order, move to adopt an order authorizing issuance and sale of the Arlington Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building and Refunding Bonds, Series 2020, and approving all matters incident thereto.
Ms. Walton?
I will second Mr. Hogg's motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote on the affirmative, motion passes. Mr. Hogg, thank you for mentioning what you said, and yes, to our financial advisors and our bond, thank you very much for taking time out of your schedule to allow our students an opportunity to see exactly what is happening with our bond money. I, I think that's very interesting, and you know what? Even if, if it wasn't the, the most exciting thing for the day, I promise, one day in their lifetime, they're going to think back and go, you know what? I know how this works. So, thank you for doing that. Really appreciate it. Okay, next thing on the agenda, items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay, I see no lights. So, we will continue on with our consent agenda. Mrs. Powell?
Thank you, President Mays, Board Members. Dr. Cavassos, we have on the agenda for your consideration this evening donations totaling $27,879, which brings the year-to-date total to $463,738. We also have six bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening, and in all of those cases, the administration recommends the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Willbanks?
I move approval of the consent agenda tonight.
And I will need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Willbanks, a second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote on the affirmative, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Okay, next thing on the agenda is our discussion item, that would be Tasby Board Policy Update 114. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion on Policy Update 114, and our Governance Committee has reviewed these policies. This is the beginning of the adoption process, so, ask Dr. Hill to lead us through Policy Update 114.
Thank you. Good evening, President Mays, Superintendent and Board. We're here to discuss Tasby Policy Update 114, and just in general, this is, this policy has encompassed changes from the 86th legislative session that impacts the government, the governance and the management of the district. This is not new to y'all. You know that the legal policy updates, there are changes in the law, and that we don't have any, any say on those. We can't adopt them, we must only be reviewing those. The local policies do require Board action to adopt, revise, or repeal the policy. Update 114 has several policies and adjustments, including public participation at Board meetings, emergency operations plans, GT program, threat assessments, student records, and requests for public information. At this point, we have reviewed all of these policies with staff internally. The Board Governance Committee has had an opportunity to look at the local policies and ask some very detailed questions, and we've sent questions back to Tasby, as well as our internal counsel have reviewed some of those policies for review. This update has 123 legal policies that basically the state says, here you go, here is the new laws, and 17 local policies of which the Governance Committee is, is aware of, and I think the full Board is aware of at this point as well, and one exhibit. Just a closer look at some of the revisions in Update 114. We talked a little bit about BE Local as one of the changes that mentions that Board members have a one-hour notice for emergency call, meaning versus previous policy said there needed to be a two-hour notice. Board Policy CH Local, purchasing and acquisition, the superintendent shall develop purchasing procedures in alignment with state and federal law. That's, we already do that. Board Policy CKC Local, safety program and emergency plans, the district's emergency operation plans shall be updated and ongoing training provided to the staff. Again, this is something that, that we already do anyway, but it's just now being written in the policy. Policy EHBB Local, special programs in GT, basically says that when the district offers a GT program, awareness sessions for parents must be provided, and an overview of the assessment procedures and the services provided in the plan must happen prior to actual enrollment in it. FFAA Local, wellness and physical examinations, basically prior to participating in any UIL or other events that the superintendent designates, there must be a medical clearance for any student that participates in them. That's a policy, it's a practice that the district's already had in, in policy, in, in practice, anyway. Some of the legal policies that basically we don't have any say on, but we just wanted to highlight a few of them, and because we are a district of innovation, we thought it'd be important to highlight that the commissioner may revoke our DLI status for the district's failure to comply with the TEA reporting requirements for criminal and criminal history background checks. So, if we're not doing that as a district of innovation, the new law says that that status can be stripped. CKC Local requires parent notification of a bomb threat or terroristic threat in any district facility where students are present. Again, that's what we do anyway. Talks a little bit about technology resources and that we must have a cybersecurity policy, which we do, and designate a cybersecurity coordinator, which the district does. In the basic instructional program, the district may allow concurrent enrollment in Algebra I and Geometry. This, again, from Senate Bill 1374 out of, out of the session. FO Legal deals with student discipline and says that the law enforcement duties of certain security personnel must be included in the student code of conduct. That's a new one to us, so as we revise the student code of conduct next year, we will outline what the duties of our security officers and our SROs are to be in alignment with this policy. And again, 17, Senate Bill 1707. So, we will continue to review these policies internally and get the feedback from Tasby, and meet again with the Governance Committee, and our intention is to bring this back to you for consideration on the February the 20th Board Meeting, so. That's Update 114 and its summary at this point, and we'll entertain any questions we may have.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Hill. It's nice to hear you say we're already doing that. I, I like the fact that we are already kind of ahead of the step on some of the things that we're being required to do. Are there any questions or discussions? No? Okay, well, once again, thank you, Dr. Hill, thank you to our Board Governance Committee, chaired by Mr. Chapa, also serving as Ms. Walton and Dr. Reich. Thank y'all very much for what y'all do with all of those local and legal rules. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our open forum for non-agenda items. Once again, I see no cards. I will confer with Mrs. Benjamin. No cards, thank you. So, we will move on, and our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to share some information about our, our school district. So, our third through sixth graders at Hale Elementary recently were surprised with brand-new Vans shoes, as well as some sunglasses, hats, Happy Meal and Under Armour socks, thanks to a partnership with the Arlington Police Foundation and the Arlington Police Department. We had our mayor there, along with Chief Johnson, Dr. Reich, others, Coach Wager, to hand out the shoes, and I would like to personally thank the Arlington Police Department and the foundation for their generous partnership, donation, and connecting all these partners to really have a great day there at, at Hale. Martin Luther Jr., King Jr. Weekend was amazing, as always, and a huge showcase of talent throughout the district, thanks to our four-day celebration committee for their work. We have representatives of, in that committee, and so, the banquet, the step show, and all the music was outstanding, and every year it is, and I thank our students and our parents for their involvement, really demonstration of, of support that, that we give during that weekend. Our January Employees of the Month were surprised this month, and I want to recognize them one more time. Tiffany Manigault at Lamar High School, Ms. Wiley Walter, Ausley Junior High, Ashley Alsas from Rankin Elementary, and Sandra Barber from The Warehouse. Congratulations to them, outstanding work. The students are just as excited when we go into those classrooms, even if they're in kindergarten, they're very excited about their teacher being recognized. In fact, in the kindergarten class, one started hugging the teacher, and you know what happens in a kindergarten classroom? They all line up and they start hugging the teacher, so, it took a little bit longer, but it was fun. Arlington ISD alum and Major League Baseball outfielder Hunter Pence gave back to his school at Little Elementary, where he attended elementary, by planting 40 trees for shade near the fields he used to play on. Pence partnered with a nonprofit, Texas Trees, to plant trees alongside with the Little Elementary students, as you see them pictured there. Thank you to Hunter for remembering his roots, no pun intended, yeah, okay, and planting seeds of success. I know, I know, it gets better, you know, this is written by...
Keep going.
Yeah, I know, I know. For the students at Little. Our AISD Education Foundation had its prize patrol, awarding grants last week, which was always exciting to the teachers and staff. The foundation awarded 19 grants to 17 schools, just under $110,000. We're so thankful for our Community and Education Foundation. One more time, thank you so much for all that they do. Annual Area Seven and Area Eight Spelling Bee's were last week. Our students are very resilient during this competition. Congratulations to our winners there. Champion Subshori Ray from Bailey Junior High, and Champion Chase Sweat from Bowles Junior High, both winners had a top, top competition, great job in the spelling bee, and you see them pictured there, so excited, a little exhausted after spelling all that. Congratulations to our All-City Band Honorees, and great job on concert last weekend. In just one day, these students worked together to put together a concert, as you're familiar with this event, and it's really the best of the best, and thank you to our Fine Arts Department, all our directors for all their hard work. And finally, Wednesday National Signing Day in Arlington ISD, to highlight our student athletes and the culmination of their high school careers as they prepare for college, we had 76 students combined from all six high schools sign letters of intent to play at 56 different colleges, earning $3.9 million in scholarship, and that's amazing. Also had a great guest speaker, NFL player Tommy Harris, gave words of wisdom about hard work and getting an education. Congratulations to all these wonderful students, their coaches, the staff, and our wonderful guest speaker that morning, it was a special morning. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any school board reports? Okay, I see no lights. I would like to, first of all, say it is a special month for two reasons. One, it is our school counselor celebration month, so we want to say thank you to all of our counselors in the district. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do outside the scope of what you're supposed to do. Thank you, we appreciate it very much, and without y'all, our schools, our principals... Thank you, we appreciate it very much, and without y'all, our schools, our principals, teachers have said it, that they couldn't do a lot of the things they do without y'all in the building. So from the school board, we want to say thank you very much for what you do. The second important reason for this month is that it's Black History Month. What I have chosen to share will be a two-part series. I'll start my first part tonight, very briefly. After National Signing Day, my thought was I will continue on that theme of athletics. So I've got some little-known facts for Black History Month of black heroes, I will call them, of AISD for first timers. So Ms. OJ Kemp, she was the first African-American and first African-American female head coach of track and field basketball at Sam Houston High School. She was the first African-American and first African-American female assistant athletic director. She was the first African-American and first African-American female athletic director. Mr. Alan Gretz, first African-American male head boys basketball coach at Bowie High School. Mr. Sammy Epps, first African-American male head cross-country and track and field coach, also at Bowie High School. He was also the first African-American male coach to win a team-state championship for boys' track. Mr. Greg Frye, first African-American head baseball coach, Bowie High School. Katra Ridgway, first African-American female head volleyball coach, Seguin High School. Rachel Wilson, first African-American and first African-American female athletic trainer, Martin High School. Mr. Anthony Chris, first African-American athletic coordinator and head football coach, Bowie High School, first African-American male assistant athletic director. So those are just a few known facts of black history that we have right here in Arlington ISD. Part two will continue February the 20th. Okay, I see no other lights, so next on our agenda, we will convene in closed session pursuant to Section 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Acts for topics set forth on our agenda, and we will do that on February the 6th, beginning at 8:09. We should be returning in 15 to 20 minutes. We will be returning in about 15 minutes for our hearings that will be held in closed session. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No.
Okay. It is 9:18 PM, and this meeting is now adjourned.